Being seven. I call to all of the rescheduled school committee meeting from March the fourteenth. Will you all please rise and pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under our command, liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Well, thank you all for coming tonight. You know, we had snowstorms, we've had all sorts of things, but at least we can finish this off so we can get to the towns and cities. Any public comment by anybody?
I have a statement.
Yes, sir.
I received this when we did our engineering study, and I noticed that there are five new members on the board since this was released. I've gone over it once, and then I went over it again recently. If somebody else would like to look at it, it is available for their perusal.
Thank you.
Just to, we decided that we needed to upgrade the school. It hasn't been touched in, what, forty years? We contracted an engineering firm to go over what had to be done, and...
It's an architectural and engineering study.
Yeah, it's pretty explicit.
It costs $120,000.
Yeah, but it states the condition of the wire, you know, everything, structure. Okay. So, the first thing we have on the agenda is approval of the February twenty-first minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Move the approvals of the February twenty-one minutes of regular school committee meetings.
Second.
Any changes, deletions, or missions? None being heard, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I have to abstain.
Yes, one abstention, Mr. James. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Move the acceptance of the February twenty-one executive session minutes for that same day.
Second.
Second. Any questions, missions, deletions on the executive session minutes? None being heard, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Unanimous. Next is the Treasury report for the month of February. Who's to accept?
Second.
Second. Any comments? None being heard, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Unanimous. Next on is old business. We have no old business to discuss. Next is the student representative, Brianna. She's not present tonight. We're gonna skip it. I'll have her do twice next time. Superintendent Lynch.
Tonight before you, I have some personnel actions for information purposes. I have a root rust driver. I have above-the-influence manager. I have a credit-for-life advisor, and that's a new grant that we just received. I have MCAS ELA after-school program. I have special education ELL course, Title I math, MCAS after-school program, and I have evening school. Also, I have spring coaches for this season. I also have a resignation of an attendance monitor. For budget update, as you know, we held a budget workshop this evening and discussed a budget which contained a 3.35 percent increase. The public hearing for the FY nineteen budget is scheduled for Wednesday, April eleventh, at 6:45 PM. MCAS update, within the last couple of weeks, juniors retook the ELA and MCAS math exam. One junior took the LA, and five juniors took the math. We're still waiting for results from the February biology MCAS exam, and currently all sophomores are taking the ELA exam this week. On Thursday, March first, I attended the Whittier Tech Educational Foundation meeting along with Kara Cosmas. I'm pleased that the members of the foundation agreed to give scholarships to this year's senior class. On Thursday, March first, I met with Representative Diana DeZoglio. We were able to discuss concerns about the foundation budget, mass municipal laws that have to do with retirement and unemployment. We were able to give her an update on our programs. On Sunday, March fourth through Tuesday, March sixth, I attended the Women in Educational Leadership Conference in Harvard. I'm so appreciative of that opportunity. I met amazing leaders, and it was truly an inspirational few days. On Friday, March ninth, I attended the school play, "We Will Rock You." I highly enjoyed the show and was amazed by the talent. I can't wait for next year's production. On Sunday, March eleventh, I attended the girls' cheerleading sectionals at Whitman-Hanson High School. I was so proud of how our team performed, and, you know, it's amazing to see the athleticism in a cheerleading competition. On Thursday, March fifteenth, Kara Cosmas and I attended the Merrimack Finance Committee meeting. I want to thank them for the opportunity to let them know and update them on Whittier Tech. On Monday, March nineteenth, I attended the Merrimack Valley Chamber breakfast with Seth Moulton and Congresswoman Nikki Songus, and they provided us an update from Washington, DC. On March nineteenth, Kara and Cosmas and I attended the West Newberry Selectmen meeting, and again, I want to thank West Newberry Selectmen for being so gracious and actually volunteering to help on some of our advisory boards, so I'm taking them up on that offer. On Wednesday, March twenty-first, I attended the Merrimack Valley Superintendent's meeting. On Wednesday, March twenty-first, the MAVA officers and I met with Jeff Wilson, the interim deputy commissioner, and his staff, and we provided an update on CTE programs and initiatives. On Friday, March twenty-third through twenty-fourth, I attended the MBA conference. It was a wonderful conference, and was highlighted with Governor Charlie Baker as the keynote speaker at the banquet, and he gave a very big shout-out to Whittier. He said, "Is anyone from Whittier here?" And, of course, we all, you know, raised our hands, and he said, "You are the loudest school I've ever been to." So, I took that as a compliment. And on Tuesday, March twenty-seventh, I attended the MAVA's officers meeting, the MAVA board meeting, and the MAVA general meeting. It was a long day of meetings, so that's my update for you.
Excuse me, I got a question. I think I lost it, but isn't there a day on the hill?
Yes.
Is that, is that close, or what?
Initially, May first, right?
I don't have my calendar in front of me. I can let you know.
Oh, so we, we didn't miss it, though. If anybody wants to go, it's quite, you know, you get to see your local representatives. Get to go. Is it?
It's, it's after our next meeting, so I'll make sure I bring the information.
Yeah, so if anybody wants to go, you know, thank you. Sorry for interrupting.
Mr. Chairman, member, and members of the committee, there's a recommendation from me to increase the project discovery program fee from $175 to $199 per student, per session, and I need to have a vote on that.
Second.
Second. Any comments on that discussion?
Just curious.
Yes, go ahead.
Is there increased transportation costs?
There's an increase in transportation costs. There's a possibility of an increase in hourly fee. It's just, it's a program that sustains itself. It doesn't come out of the district budgets. We want to make sure that, you know...
How long has it pre-spend at that $175?
I want to say five years.
Five years.
Thank you.
Yep.
All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Unanimous.
Again, before you tonight is an increase in the athletic sports camp fee, and that's from $100 to $125.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Make your motion.
Motion, Mr. Early, second. Ms. Gilbert, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Unanimous.
Is that a summer program?
Yes. Also, before you tonight is a recommendation to establish a Chapter seventy-four Health Assisting Instructor slash Post-Secondary LPN Administrator position. I spoke about this a little bit earlier. In order to open up a licensed practical nursing program, you have to have a director on board working on curriculum a year before the program actually starts, so that is the reason for this establishment of this position.
Right, and that salary was in this budget we just approved?
Yes.
Correct, okay. Yes, sir.
If I could, is this just for establishing curriculum, or is she gonna be like assistant teachers or working with students in some capacity?
Yes, so she'll also be a health assisting teacher part-time, so she'll have a couple of classes, but the rest of the time, she'll be working on...
Yeah, that's all. I was curious. I couldn't see somebody working on curriculum for 180 days.
No.
You know, I had a question. So, once this whole thing gets established, and we have nurses on board teaching, does that give us the opportunity to flu shots and stuff like that?
We can do that now.
Oh, you can? Like, for the elderly, you can come in here?
Well, not for the elderly, but for staff. I mean, it's so easy right now to get a flu shot at your CVS or...
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
Okay. You might come for breakfast to get a flu shot.
It's not a bad, it's not a bad idea.
No? Anyway, any more discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Unanimous.
Tonight before you is an establishment of a dental assisting program, a position, and this position will be put in Perkins, and that's how this position will be funded, and this is for the establishment of the program in September.
Second.
Second by Mr. Murphy. Any more discussion on this?
Maureen, are kids choosing it already this year?
Dental, no. So, we have to do a year of exploratory, and then after next year, they can choose it.
Okay. Any more discussion? None being heard, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Unanimous.
That's terrific.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, tonight is an establish, I'd like to establish a scholarship from Eastern Bank as donating $2,000 scholarships, $2,000 scholarship to benefit a graduating Whittier Tech senior. I would like to thank Laura Kurzak, the Executive Director of Eastern Bank, Chair of the Foundation and Eastern Bank, for her generous scholarship. I respectfully request the school committee's acceptance of this scholarship.
Some move. Second. Mr. True, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, again, an establishment of a scholarship. The Whittier Tech Educational Foundation is donating $10, $500 scholarships to benefit graduating Whittier Tech seniors based on, but not limited to, high academic achievement, perseverance, community service, and/or need. I would like to thank the Whittier Tech Educational Foundation for these generous scholarships.
Some moved. Wow, that's pretty impressive. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, the League of Women Voters is donating $500, a $500 scholarship to benefit a graduating Whittier Tech senior based on student civic engagement and community contribution who plans to attend a two- or a four-year college and/or technical school. I would like to thank Kay Green and Peggy Toomey and the League of Women Voters for this generous scholarship.
Some moved.
Second. Does this, does that scholarship go to a male or doesn't it?
I think it's either. It doesn't, isn't specific about male or female.
So, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, Skills USA, our district competition was last week, and we will be having students attend the state competition, and that is the twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth, and I have at least three advisors going. It's April twenty-sixth through April twenty-eighth, and I, we have about 100 students attending this, this competition. I need school committee's approval because it is an overnight.
Overnight? Remotion?
Some move.
Some move. Second. Yes, Mr. Early.
Paperwork in order.
It will be in order before they leave.
When we have these students go on an overnight, whatever, how, is there a formula to decide how many chaperones or just what you think you need?
It's generally, it's ten to one, generally.
But there's no, what, say state law that says for every family, you have to have one?
No, and there's no school committee policy, but, you know, safety's obviously the topic.
And they're all staff members?
Yes.
So, if a parent says, "Oh, can I go?"
Well, they can rent a hotel room, but...
But they don't, they don't go, they're not considered, okay.
At least for this trip. You know, sometimes for a Kansas City trip, a parent would want to go, and they would, you know, room with their child.
Yeah, but they're not considered, they're not getting paid.
Yeah.
Okay. Some schools, they use, they pay parents to go. Anyway, did we vote on that?
Yeah.
We did. Yeah, okay.
We have a motion.
All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Thank you.
Also, tonight, and I apologize for not getting this to you earlier, but we need to have a vote on us being, Whittier Tech being able to submit a statement of interest. I have it here, if anyone would like to approve it. It's, it's the same as last year, and we've highlighted a few different areas that we've changed, but we're obviously looking at an accessible building, a safe building, a building that meets Title IX requirements, and looking at infrastructure needs here at the school. I say it all the time, you know, it looks great on the outside, but you get behind the walls, and we have some issues. So, I want to thank Ms. Cosmas for spending the time writing this statement of interest, but I do need to get a school committee approval to submit the statement of interest at this time.
Second.
Second. Motion by Mr. Early, second by Ms. Murphy.
Yeah.
Yeah, any questions on that?
Joe.
Yes, sir.
Is there a dollar amount on that?
No.
No, not yet.
No. So, what happens is they'll read our statement of interest, see if that we have the need, then we'll have to do a feasibility study, and then from that feasibility study, that's when they start talking about how much money it could possibly cost to do a new school, which I don't think we're gonna need, or what it would be for renovation, so...
Where does the money come from, the feasibility study?
Whittier Tech. So, that was...
It's already set aside in the budget?
We've set aside last year the stabilization fund, so we've put some money in that stabilization fund.
Fund.
Yeah.
It could be like a million dollars.
Yeah. I think last year, we put in the stabilization $390.
Ninety-five or something.
Yeah.
Is the governor committed to how many grants they're gonna do?
Every year, it's different.
Yeah, I think last year was eleven.
Okay, I guess I have to read this?
Go ahead.
It's a superintendent's recommendation that the school committee vote to authorize a superintendent to submit the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated March twenty-ninth, 2018, for the Whittier Regional Vocational Technical High School located at 115 Ansbury Lime Road, Havel, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future, as noted in priorities three, four, five, and seven of this application regarding total renovation of an existing building and system updates project, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Whittier Regional Vocational High School to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Okay. So, we need to move that again?
Yes.
Yes, so moved. Second.
Second.
Mr. James. More discussion on this. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Unanimous.
That fingers crossed this time.
I know.
That's all you have?
That's all I have. It's been a long time since I've seen you all.
Yeah.
You can keep talking if you want.
Do you think we should take, take Kara first, or you, you want to go?
Whatever you want.
Now, I have the principals' report. Mr. McGee.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, and the rest of the school committee members. I'm a little confused, too, on the times of the, all the snow days, too, but hopefully I can get this down. I just want to congratulate all the winter sports that finished up a couple of weeks ago, and I just want to congratulate all the teams on such a wonderful season. Like Ms. Lynch said, the cheerleading crew went down to the state finals and placed sixth, and I just want to congratulate Coach Bennett and all the students, student athletes, another successful season. The winter sports banquet is set for Tuesday, April third, that's this week coming, believe it or not, at 6:00 PM, so if you want to put that in your calendars, as well as, we know that spring sports have started, and you can see all the kids running inside, and hopefully, Mother Nature, things are melting outside, but spring sports, we had pretty much in full swing. We have 261 student athletes participating so far, which is nice.
Excellent.
Yeah, it's excellent. Some of the vocational happenings, Skills USA districts competed March fifteenth at Greater Lowell. About 210 students participated and brought back close to 48 medals, and as well as, there was a state officer from Whittier Tech was selected, Lauren Fitzgerald, I believe she's a sophomore from Salisbury. The first time ever in the school's history that we've had someone represent the skills. It's excellent. So, it was, it was quite impressive. Also, on March sixth, Kathy Baines and several culinary students went off to the culinary competition called Prostad, and the students placed third, and as well as Mr. Whittier and the sophomore carpentry students working on the Furniture Trust and getting ready to win again, and he told me to say that he's, hopefully, he will keep the display out there, so hopefully, maybe next time, next month, we can take a look at it. The Spring Musical, Superintendent Lynch said, it was fabulous.
Really was.
Just an amazing "We Will Rock You," and as well as, you know, I want to congratulate Ms. Urban and all the members of the cast, staff members, everybody, and the students, more importantly, for just an excellent job, and what talent, just amazing singers, amazing talent, so if it wasn't a night, it was just, we were in awe.
Probably one of the best I've ever seen.
Yeah, me too.
Really.
Me too.
Right, and one after another, one singer after another, I was like, wow. And there are a lot of underclassmen, so that's, that's a nice bright future Ms. Urban has. The guidance team is wrapping, they're wrapping up their interviews in coming ninth-grade students, and they're pretty much gonna be finishing, you know, their visits, and, you know, everything was meshed in because of the storms and all that, and that's all I have tonight. Yes, sir.
When's the last day of school?
Right now, it's the twenty-sixth, Tuesday, I think that's Tuesday, no, June twenty-sixth, so hopefully, Mother Nature, please don't give us any more storms.
Not bad.
That's not bad.
And graduation was unaffected, correct?
It's unaffected, yes, that's correct.
Okay, so what is, what is the date of graduation?
That's June second, is it? I want to say, was that the makeup day?
Yeah, I don't have my calendar with me.
You know, I don't have my calendar...
It's the Thursday after Memorial Day.
Yeah, so it's the Thursday, maybe the June second. Hold on, let me get my phone.
I think it's the thirty-first.
Wait, I have it right there. I think it's the thirty-first, June second, makeup day. One second.
June second.
We have a run-out of batteries with doom.
My power goes out, we're in some trouble.
If it's the Thursday after Memorial Day, it's the thirty-first of May, correct?
Yeah, one second.
That sounds right.
Yep.
I guess we just got two, Chris.
Sorry, a little delay.
You know what the problem is? Math's pretty difficult for us.
You're correct. So, graduation, early release is the thirty-first, that Thursday, and the makeup day is the second, so...
What's the timeline?
And that falls, it's a Thursday. That's correct. Yep.
I saw the blood drain out of your face.
So, that whole week, the senior week, twenty-eight through the thirty, thirty-first and the first.
So, rain day is...
Rain day would be the second, that Saturday, that Saturday, the time to be determined.
Okay.
Okay.
So, here was that Friday.
I got a question for you. I was over at the Ansbury Public Schools, and they, they've entered into this program, I think it's a pilot system, with the state, it's called a Blizzard Bag. Have you heard of it?
I have heard of them, yep.
Yeah, and apparently, there's a bunch of homework, some books to read, everything, and it's in this bag, and on a snow day or whatever, the students take this, they take it, they have it at home, they do this, and if eighty percent of them turn it in satisfactorily, then the school's granted a regular day instead of adding on at the end of the year, so...
Right.
Is that something that you think we should look at, consider, or is it not worth?
I think it would be very difficult to have a Blizzard Bag for carpentry, or welding, or culinary, or...
Social needs students.
Yes.
We get the point.
Yeah.
No, I just ask...
Yeah, I don't know the stats, but, I mean, we've had eleven days, ten, eleven days. I think that's astronomical, you know, and right now, I think we were okay, because we're not near that, the twenty-nine, so not going wood.
I know.
We've turned the corner.
Yeah.
But my philosophy, my philosophy is, as you get into the third, last week of June, it's kind of hard to keep everybody engaged, you know.
You do.
Anything else for...
I...
Yes?
I can just add on to what Chris said about the play, the musical.
Yes.
I think it's the best one I've ever seen. The kids were phenomenally talented.
Yes.
And I thoroughly enjoyed it. It made me so very proud. They did such a fantastic job.
We were searching, the next day, Superintendent Lynch, myself, the staff were searching because they had costumes and makeup, like, "That's the kid, that's the singer. I have to go over there and tell her. She was amazing in this one," so it was excellent.
They were wonderful.
Yeah, we were, we were just...
Truly wonderful.
They're ecstatic how talented these kids are, so we're lucky.
And underclassmen, too.
Yeah, a lot of underclassmen.
Yeah.
Yep. The Queen's songs are not easy to sing, either, so...
And, you know, on that note, the, I think the Christmas concert that they did was probably the best one I've ever been to, ever. It was phenomenal, so...
Make sure we'll, we share that with Ms. Urban, because she works really hard.
Oh.
And actually, Mr. Priscelli, they both work very hard with these kids, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Great, thank you, everyone.
KK's up. Can they call you KK?
Call me whatever you like.
No, I'm not me, personally, but...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, members of the committee. First of all, thank you for your vote on the statement of interest. I cross my fingers, maybe this time will be the lucky time, but we'll keep trying until we get in. Just a couple of things for you this evening. The first is in-your-packet bid results. As you know, we were looking to replace the boilers this year. On February eighth, we opened bids for three boilers, and these three boilers will replace five older boilers. The three new boilers will produce an output of 5.5 million BTUs, and it's comparable to the output of the five old boilers, so we're getting three to replace five. Please note that this was a rebid. We had bid this in the fall, and at the last minute, before we were ready to sign the contract, the contractor pulled out of the bid. So, we decided to kind of wait a little bit, hoping that if we were looking at something, you know, in the winter towards spring, when they might not be that busy in the springtime, we might do better, and it actually worked to our favor, because the bid came in at, I believe, $204,000, and it was approximately $30,000 less than the bid that we had received in the fall. So, we are signing the contract as we speak, and we will start working on the boilers as soon as we don't need to heat the building anymore. Hopefully, that will happen soon. It's been a very long winter. Any questions on that?
Great, good job.
Thank you. And then, just, I wanted to let you know that on February twenty-third, we received notification from the Department of Ed, and they certified our excess and deficiency amount, account, and this year, it was certified in the amount of $843,007, which represents a little bit less than four percent of what we are allowed to have.
Any questions? Mrs. Gilbert?
Just one, Kara, on the boiler replacement, you, you're going to plan it when you don't need heat, but what about hot water?
These aren't hot water boilers, these are just for the heat. Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thanks.
We would not do that, we would plan it for the summer if they were doing hot water.
Okay.
And they're both natural gas?
I believe so, yes, yes, I believe so.
Well, they have to.
Yeah, they are. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And chairs report, I don't have all, how many do we have? Self-evaluations? I get three, so I get five, so please continue to finish those up, and I will hand them off to the chair, next chair. Budget review, I think we finished that tonight. I think we have a, a strong budget for next year, and we're in a, in a good percentage increase, 3.35. Subcommittee reports, executive, we did have an executive meeting, and we have the minutes from the 21st meeting. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Or to approve, second.
I just had a question.
Yes, questions?
I just have a question about the capital assessment increased by $100,000. Does that reflect it in our budget? I'm just a little bit confused.
Yes.
You know, I'm referring to at the very end?
Yes.
What's taken at the meeting?
Yeah, that's why it's 6:45.
Okay, that was why. Okay, I just didn't know, like, we just voted on it and.
Right, it was 4, it was 4:75, I think.
A hundred less than.
It's a hundred less.
A hundred, so a hundred less, okay. Yes, and I didn't realize that, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So on favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. Dr. Testaverde is not here on the instructional. Plan operations, Mr. Tucker.
We did have a meeting before the previous school committee meeting, we have some minutes to approve. We're just talking about the, the health center and, and the greenhouse project, which we're, which we're, is sort of moving forward. New door badge lock system, which was also talked about, but other than that, we have nothing scheduled. So I'll move to accept minutes of.
Second.
Oh, let's see, February 21.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Gilbert. Any further discussion? On being heard, on favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. Sorry, negotiation, Mr. Early.
We're still in negotiations with them, we have a meeting set up, I believe, next Wednesday at 3 o'clock. We'll get back to you once we get an update of that.
All righty. Policy, Mr. Irving is not here.
We haven't met.
We haven't met. Okay, now, next meeting, April 9th, which is a Monday, is our annual organization meeting for all those members, new and old, it's refreshing. It starts at 5:30 for the dinner, which is sponsored by the Culinary Department. It's a wonderful time, we get all this administration staff are here, we have the dinner, and then we, at 7:00 PM, we then reconvene back here and reorganize with the chair and the vice chair, and then the chair, the new chair, will make several appointments as far as, who's the treasurer? There's two or three appointments.
The organizational meeting.
Yeah, yeah, warrant, people are signed to warrant, it's all part of that, but it does start at 5:30 for the dinner, okay?
And the meeting starts at 7:00.
Meeting starts at 7:00. Then at, the next 11th, which is the Wednesday, we'll have the regular meeting, scheduled meeting, and that starts at 6:45 for a public hearing on the budget, where any, any resident of the districts can come, you know, select or whatever, and for the public hearing, and then the regular meeting will start at 7:00 PM. Everybody, let's hear clear on that. They'll send out an announcement to everybody just as we get closer.
Do we vote to see budget at the end of the public hearing, or do we do it on a future date?
At the end of the public. And then.
Don't we do it in the regular meeting? I think it's at the end of the regular.
Yeah, in the reg, the regular meeting. And then, it has to be approved by eight of the cities and towns that represent the district. Last year, was it unanimous last year? It wasn't, I don't, I see, because we're, you know, we're pretty, we're pretty, well within budgetary limits, I think we'll have, probably have a good satisfactory conclusion.
But you need two-thirds of the school committee.
Eight, you need eight votes.
I'm talking about school committee vote, to pass our budget.
Yes.
We need it for two-thirds.
Oh, yes.
But you don't need eight, I believe.
Right, that's a, that's a financial.
No, he's talking about communities.
Communities.
Oh, 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 yeah.
Yeah, each, what happens is, most of the communities will have a, a financial, you know, will go over their budget. Usually the towns go first, because it's done by the selectmen, and then usually the cities are later, in May and June, Havel, Ainsbury, you know, they're always at the end.
Yeah, that's when, yeah.
Yeah, we have them scheduled.
Yeah, but usually what happens is, by the time you get to Ainsbury and Havel, it's usually already been passed.
Actually, Ainsbury is a little bit earlier, we've already gotten a date for them.
Oh, is that right? Okay. And if anybody would like to attend, just contact Maureen, like, when we're going through the finance committee or the board selectmen from your district, if you'd like to attend the meeting with her, you're more than welcome to, go along with her. All righty, do I understand? Yes.[1685.32]